Now, caller order this meeting, the City of Honeyburg County Council. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father God, thank you for the opportunity for us to be here today to serve this community. As we go through the meeting this evening, we ask that you guide us in our thoughts and that what we do here is for the benefit for all, for these things we ask from your son's name.
Amen.
We have approval, press approval of minutes.
Make a motion to approve the minutes. I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I do want to let you know that we do have Steve McFerrin right now on Zoom as part of the meeting.
So I need to do the roll?
Do need to roll.
McFerrin.
Aye.
Where?
Aye.
Bound?
Aye.
Balty?
Aye.
Five ayes, no nays.
Motion to approve the claims, too.
I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Kissling.
Aye.
McFerrin.
Aye.
Where?
Aye.
Bound?
Aye.
Balty?
Aye.
Five ayes, no nays.
Going to do something now that's kind of out of the...
Do you want to do this first? The pro temp?
Oh, yes. Yeah. Well, let's... First of all, yeah, we probably should do that first. Election of the President pro temp right now, that is being held by Tim Ware and has for the past year here, but we accept motions to, or I guess nominations for President pro temp for the governor.
Well, we may as well keep Tim as far as I'm concerned. He's council at large.
Thank you very much. I'll be happy to accept it.
And so, we have nominations. Any other nominations? All right, I'll call when nominations close and call for a vote.
I make...
All those in favor?
Aye.
Who's second?
I'll second.
Okay. Kissling.
Aye.
McFerrin.
Aye.
Where?
Aye.
Bound?
Aye.
Balty?
Aye.
Five ayes, no nays.
Well, we missed this first meeting since first of the year, but January 1st marked the 25th anniversary of Tom Dippel, and wanted to present him with his 25-year plaque here. I don't know if somebody can take a picture for me, it'd be great. I'm sure Tom wants his picture somewhere.
He writes on the phone. Tell us what phone it is.
Yeah, get those.
So here's your pet.
Aye.
You probably got the good voice on that already. Okay, congratulations. I'd shake your hand, Tom, but I have one hand here. Congratulations. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
We appreciate it. Tom's been a huge asset to the city. We're lucky to have him.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Next up on the agenda, we have Cindy Broker here from Mentors for Youth. We did a proclamation earlier in the beginning of the month that we posted out there, but I wanted formally present it to Cindy Deny. I'll move that out here.
Yes.
To everybody.
And this is Erin Kidwell. She's the executive director.
Hi.
Aye.
Perfect timing. Yeah.
You want a photo op? We can get pictures if you want.
Sure.
I can take a picture.
Rosina said she would take pictures.
Yes.
Well, Mentors for Youth has long been established in DuBois County for as far back as I can remember, frankly, and it's a very important program that we have available here. I feel like I'm tall, but I'm really not, so I'm going to lean down a little bit. So I'm going to read the proclamation. It's from the office of the mayor. Whereas mentoring is a vital component in development of youth, providing guidance, support, and inspiration, and whereas mentors empower young individuals to achieve their goals and so in confidence and fostering positive growth, and whereas the contributions of mentors create a ripple effect positively impacting families, communities, and society as a whole. There are many ways to get involved beyond mentoring, such as volunteering at events, being a board or committee member, and providing financial support, and whereas this month we recognize and celebrate the dedication of mentors who give their time and knowledge to nurture the potential of the next generation. Whereas, the month of January, we honor all mentors and encourage others to join in this final effort to support our youth and build our brighter future. Now, therefore, I, Neil Elkins, Mayor of Honeyburg, Indiana, do hereby proclaim January 1-31, 2025, as Mentors for Youth Month in Honeyburg, and ask the citizens of Honeyburg to remember that there's a child out there waiting for someone like you.
Thank you very much.
Which I think... Now, if you want to say anything, I know there's a fundraiser tomorrow night.
Oh, yes. So tomorrow night at Yard Goat, the Spreading Optimism Event...
Do you want to go to that? Just to make sure they can hear you, if you want to go to the podium.
Yeah. So tomorrow night, the Spreading Optimism Event at Yard Goat is raising funds for Mentors for Youth, so $1 for every pint sold, I think, goes to Mentors for Youth, and other than that, we're using this Mentors for Youth Month to raise some awareness about the program. We're trying to engage 15 new supporters in the program, so whether that's they want to mentor, they want to join the board or the committees, they want to just help out at outings, there's a place for everyone in our organization, so that... There's a supporter interest form actually on our website, on the homepage, www.mentors4youth.com, and it's just there on the bottom, and you can indicate, you know, a few areas that you might want to help, and I will reach out and we will figure out where to plug you in. So, yeah, that is the big goal for this month.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And I'll see you tomorrow night.
Perfect.
Next up, and you can stay or you can leave, whatever you wish to do, so it's your call. We do have a presentation right now, and your papers here will prob... Are wrong, but we did update it. It is Rosina Sandoval to be here doing a presentation from Alasi. Alasi finished their one year of just about four or five months ago with their new location across the street. Rosina's named executive director here recently also, and I asked her to really talk about their impact upon our community. We do support the City of Honeyburg, Alasi, I think, through financially by providing them the rental assistance at their office across the street, and I think as a result of that, we'd like to see what all you've done in the last year.
Let's do this. Here, right?
Yes.
Okay. Well, first of all, my name is Rosina Sandoval. This is my fifth day as executive director of Alasi. Yes, it feels so good. I really want to thank you for your time, and then, most importantly, I do want to thank you for your partnership, your partnership in giving us a space, a space that we can transform into a safe space for a lot of our most vulnerable community members. So we are very grateful for that. Alasi started... You'll see, because we're filming a documentary on the start, on how Alasi started, and you'll be invited to that, but I'm going to just cover briefly. It started as a 501(c)(3) in 2008, and since then, we've moved and we've worked with a lot of community providers and a lot of city collaborators. That's the important part, and whenever I go out there and talk about the history of Alasi, I talk about what a fantastic community I ended up in. Like, DuBois County, we are really open, not just the city, but also the schools, community members, institutions, a lot of service providers are working with us to help us make this space that you are providing for us a safe space. So, thank you. Having said that, we opened the doors of the resource center a little bit over a year, and since then, it hasn't stopped. The doors are revolving doors. We have seen, we have completed over 500 appointments, and the numbers I shared, we completed them in December, so by now, there are more, because doors have been open, over completed appointments. So a complete appointment is we receive the families and we help the maxes. We go through the... First of all, we explain the system, whether it is immigration, whether it is health, mental health, education, all of the systems in the United States. So we first explain, how is it here, and how that's different from my home country? And sometimes the reactions we get from them, I wish I could record them, but we can't. It's amazing. We're going to share some of those studies, some of those cases eventually. So that's the complete appointment. If you think that number is big for a year, we've also had over 1,000 walk-ins, over 1,000 walk-ins. So people won't stop showing up. We had a... We have a lot of nationalities. I'm working on the map of nationalities that we've received, and I'm going to share that with you a little bit later. Give me a few more days, and I'll complete the report. We are, in the past two months, we're seeing, for example, a decrease in Haitian community attending the resource center, but we've seen an increase in Cuban community members looking for information and help and support. Then I shared in the report a little bit more data, and then I want to go to the page where it talks about the services we've been helping. Number one is employment. So all of our new community members that come to the center are looking for jobs. They're looking, and they're coming to the center, they don't know how... A lot of them don't know how to make a resume, for example, or how to apply for a job. I can share, for example, in Mexico, we don't go to the websites and apply over there. We go, we look, we talk to the people, and here it's very different. So all of that process, sometimes we do it for them, because they don't have access to laptops, computers, cell phones. Sometimes we teach them how to do it at different companies, at different places. We help them also, for example, the education system. How old are they? If we receive 16-year-old, 17-year-old, those kids that are going to be 18 in two months, oh my God, what are we going to do? If high school, they accept the kids till they're 18. So we start talking a little bit more about adult education, and again, it's learning the education system. It's fascinating, the process of receiving immigrants and helping them utilize their skills and their assets to strengthen our community. It's really fantastic. I am so blessed to be able to work in a place like this. Aside from employment, it's immigration, it's school, the school system, it's housing. In one of the committees, the access committee, Mayor Elkins attended that, those meetings, and we talk a lot about housing and how to improve the conditions for a lot of our families. Well, so that's for the appointments that we've had. And on the other side, on the community side of things, we host a roundtable. The roundtable, Mesa Redonda, we invite all community members, and we work on our four pillars. The first one is expanding education. Schools, our DuBois County schools, I'm so proud of the schools. We're doing a lot to be inclusive to all of our students and help them develop their potential, utilizing all of the funds of knowledge that our kids bring with them from other countries. And then, we have advancing access. As I mentioned, the advancing access committee talks about everything that I just shared, all of the appointments, and how to connect them with services, with employment, and with whatever they need. Then we have celebrating culture, my favorite, of course. This year in celebrating culture, we're focusing on the Latino Culture Fest. Have you been to the Latino Culture Fest? Yeah? So, we have a grant that's called Vozes Vivas, where it's a continuation of a project we started three years ago, where we opened the first Hispanic exhibit at the DuBois County Museum, so this is a continuation of that. And then, we have one more that I am forgetting, but if I remember.
Securing sustainability.
Of course, the money part of the thing. Securing sustainability, that's our fourth pillar, and in this committee, well, you know what securing sustainability means. We are, we're working with our donors. You are part of this committee, you're a very important part, and I wanted to share all of this information with you. If you have any questions, you have my contact information at the end of the presentation. I'm here, I think, fifth day, but I really hope to build up an even stronger partnership with everybody here in Honeyburg and DuBois County, and eventually show what we have here in all of the state of Indiana.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Some of the points you'd bring up, this isn't just a Honeyburg thing, DuBois County and beyond are relevant.
Yes.
That they assist, so they're a great regional asset, and they're recognized across the state of Indiana for the services that you provide that are going towards the sustainability area is really what I like about your services. But I was... Latino Cultural Festival, one thing that really surprised me, you had the flags, I think there were 16 countries that you had flags from. I thought maybe six, and I've lived here 36 years, and I didn't realize that we're up to 16 countries.
Yes.
So amazing amount of immigrants that are coming into our DuBois County area right now.
Yes, and those flag, there are 21, I think. Don't put it out there. I think 21 Latin flags right here. The people that we've seen are from 16 different countries, so let's see this next year. Let's see what happens.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Cindy Attorney Phil Schneider. I know he has the annual fire protection.
Yes, we have. Every year, we enter into a fire protection contract with the Potoka Township trustee. They contribute $26,000 toward fire protection services, and that makes our firefighters available to fires in Potoka Township. So that has to be approved every year by ordinance, and the ordinance authorizes the Board of Public Works to enter into that contract with Potoka Township. So I think you... I assume you had an ordinance under?
Yes.
Or back?
That'd be 2025-01.
I'll make a motion to approve the...
Introduce.
Introduce, I guess.
We got a motion to introduce. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Kissling.
Aye.
McFerrin. McFerrin.
I think you said aye, but we can't hear you.
Say aye, but we can't.
Now, I mean, aye.
There you go.
Where?
Aye.
Bound?
Aye.
Balty?
Aye.
Five ayes, no nays.
You can suspend the rules if you choose.
Make motion to suspend the rules without the same night introduced.
I'll second that.
We have first and second suspend the rules and approve on the same night. All those in favor?
Aye.
Kissling.
Aye.
McFerrin.
Aye.
Where?
Aye.
Bound?
Aye.
Balty?
Aye.
Five ayes, no nays.
Motion carries. Thank you.
And you may consider adoption now.
I'll make a motion to adopt.
I'll second.
We have first and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Kissling.
Aye.
McFerrin.
Aye.
Where?
Aye.
Bound?
Aye.
Balty?
Aye.
Five ayes, no nays.
Passes, thank you.
And then the next order of business is very similar. They, we enter into a contract with the Potoka Township annually for recreational services that permit them to participate in recreational programs that our park board offer to the city of Honeyburg, and for that, they contribute the sum of $12,000 per calendar year to the park board budget. So that also would require an ordinance if you want to continue that practice.
I'll make a motion to...
2025-02.
I'll second.
So we have first and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Kissling.
Aye.
McFerrin.
Aye.
Where?
Aye.
Bound?
Aye.
Balty?
Aye.
Five ayes, no nays.
Motion carries.
Make a motion to introduce the same night. Make a motion to pass the same night as introduced.
All right. Do we have a second for that, to suspend the rules and move forward on first night?
On second in.
All right. We have first, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Kissling.
Aye.
McFerrin.
Aye.
Where?
Aye.
Bound?
Aye.
Balty?
Aye.
Five ayes, no nays.
Thank you. Pass. Motion passes. Thank you.
Need to adopt.
Make a motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Kissling.
Aye.
McFerrin.
Aye.
Where?
Aye.
Bound?
Aye.
Balty?
Aye.
Five ayes, no nays.
Motion to adopt carries. Thank you.
I do... Let me pass around two copies of that agreement for the recreational services. For some reason, we always have the council sign that. I think sometimes the park board is difficult to getting a quorum president, something he's going to... So this is just for the council to sign. Two copies. And then I'll leave these ordinances by the time... These are timed.
Okay, thank you. I can probably make, get myself to sign them, but I didn't...
Do the whole call.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I'll do it.
And that's all I have.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Phil. We have Coach Fraser, Tom Dippel. Tom, do you have ordinance for the electric cash revenue fund to loan the gas utility? Will we get this and see that approval of that, as well as an interest, suggested interest rate from the council? But if you want to explain what that is, anyone?
Yeah, we are coming into our heating season, and the cash balance of the gas utility may not be enough to temporarily purchase the gas that we need in our colder months. So what this does is allows us to, a loan from the electric cash reserve fund basically has needed. It won't take any money unless, unless we need to. What you all will need to do, though, is decide on what interest rates you want to charge the gas.
There's a, there's a timing difference between when we have to pay for the gas and when we get the revenue from the customers, and so sometimes that presents a real cash shortfall for the gas department, and this would help them through that cash crunch.
Yeah, the revenue is sometimes six weeks behind what the expense is, you know, so from the time we purchase, the utility bills go out and people pay, there's about a six-week lag, and it's pretty cold right now, so those could be...
And we expect to pay this back this year, right?
It's four or five years, but yeah, I wouldn't see why we wouldn't, but...
Rather than doing this every year, I think we're, Tom is suggesting that you enter into this agreement that will allow you to do, revolve, essentially a revolving loan for five years, but it has to be repaid within five years.
That means we wouldn't have to do this again next year.
That's correct.
Because that would still give them the ability to do that.
I could still take, yeah, if need be.
Is there a minimum or maximum interest rate that we have to assess?
It could be zero, or it could be less than userless, which is about 32%, I think.
I think it's 28, but maybe...
We love the gas department. Hate the gas department.
Hasn't Stark leave it between zero and five, Tom? Is that correct?
What is the rate we charge the wastewater department?
I think it's 1%. Is it?
We have one. We didn't charge wastewater. We charged them zero. We charged water, I think, 1% or 2%.
I know we've done this with water for the plant, and we did wastewater for their plant, but those were different rates?
Probably because of the time, the timing of it. Yes, Steve. I think wastewater paid off, didn't it?
Wastewater is all paid off. The water is halfway there. It was for, it was for a machine that we excavator, I believe.
And the revenue to pay this back ought to be available in six or eight weeks, right? I mean, it's not like we're going to actually carry this for a long time, or is that expected?
That's... Well, you know, I don't know. You don't, it's so, gas is so dependent on the weather.
Well, and I think we purchased it in bulk, and we have to pay for it in bulk, and then we use it as we do, so if they use it quickly, it'll be paid off sooner, right?
It's also on the commodity market. We don't, we don't get the set of price.
No.
But we also have, we have the tracker to, to take care of that, but that's always a month behind also.
Yeah, it's all in rears.
I feel like it will eventually be reimbursed. It's just a matter of time as to when the gas is used.
It definitely be reimbursed.
Or how much time, yeah, so...
But it gets reimbursed from the gas revenue, right?
All gas revenue.
It's not coming out of... None of this money would be going to the, to another project and all. So, yeah, so I don't, I personally feel like they're both overseen by the same person, the same superintendent, they're both being funded by the same customers. I say we set the interest rate as low as we possibly can, minimally. There's not really a... But I guess the funds are coming out of something that are earning an interest rate, right?
He has something in cash flow.
Yes, there are. It'll get another, a little less than 5%.
But this, but this money is earning interest?
Well, I looked, I pulled up the statement Tom gave us when we did budgets, and electric has quite a bit of cash flow.
Yeah.
So we could probably tap into that without having to pull CD. At least that's my thought.
Well, the dollars are invested at Trust Indiana. Okay. And that's where the rate, the highest rate is at this point.
I'd agree with, with the, Jeff, what we need to do is probably make it as low as possible, and I'd say 1% would be sufficient.
I would agree with that.
I would agree too.
A motion? For 1%?
Make a motion for 1% interest on the loan from the gas department, electric departments.
Okay.
Mr. Ware have the second.
Right here.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Kissling.
Aye.
McFerrin.
Aye.
Where?
Aye.
Bound?
Aye.
Balty?
Aye.
Five ayes, no nays.
And then you would need to consider adoption of ordinance number 25-03, which would permit a loan, I'd say a million dollars over a five-year period, at 1% interest to the gas department. The loan would be represented by multiple draws and repayments as needed over a five-year period.
So we have a motion to...
Introduce.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Kissling.
Aye.
McFerrin.
Aye.
Ware.
Aye.
Bounce.
Aye.
Boltie.
Aye.
Five ayes, no nays. Motion carries. Suspend.
Suspend, I make a motion to suspend the rules and adopt, same night as introduced.
And we have motion to suspend and adopt.
I'll second it.
All right, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Kissling.
Aye.
McFerrin.
Aye.
Ware.
Aye.
Bounce.
Aye.
Boltie.
Aye.
Five ayes, no nays. Now, we, uh, do we have a motion to adopt?
I'll make a motion to adopt.
We have the first.
I'll second.
And a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Kissling.
Aye.
McFerrin.
Aye.
Ware.
Aye.
Bounce.
Aye.
Boltie.
Aye.
Five ayes, no nays.
Somebody keep track of how many ayes you've heard.
I was just thinking, usually it's more exciting than those, almost like eyes.
They're on the verge of setting a record here.
Do, do we have any other, uh, do you have anything else, Tom?
Uh, no, that's it for today.
Okay.
We will be having a board, a board of finance, uh, meeting at the next, at the next council meeting, since you all are the same body. It has to be done in January.
Our next council meeting will be that.
Yeah.
Uh, one question about, will you notify us whenever you borrow money out of that or?
I mean, it's gonna be.
You never know.
Okay.
I mean, I'm not gonna notify you before because otherwise I.
Right, we'll make aware. All right.
Where insurance is gonna happen, we have any citizens' items in Sydney? You again?
I know, right?
I appreciate you, thank you.
So, thank you, Mr. Schneider, for sending the ordinance for the hoarding. Um, I was able to read in detail some of the information that was in there. I just had two questions.
Thank you.
One is, can there be a, I had read in other policies that after it's reached the cap of how much can be fined for hoarding ordinance? Some of the cities have progressed into where they say that they will go in and they will hire a company to clean up the place and that property owner then is then responsible for that bill. So in other words, after you've reached that, that seven thousand some odd cap, they put that on top of it, that they don't give up at that point. And then that takes care of the problem. I don't know if that's something we could consider.
Well, you could, uh, it becomes a problem though when you, again, start disposing of people's property, whether we think it's junk or whether they think it's valuable items. Uh, we can't go in and destroy people's property, take property without just compensation, that's unconstitutional to do that. So what I, I prefer to do in those situations where we're not getting, uh, compliance with the property owner is that we bring an action in court for injunctive relief and get a court order enjoining them, requiring them, mandating them to abate their violation and let the judge then start fining them and he has the ability to fine them and jail them for contempt of court.
Okay.
Uh, I think that's more effective than us trying to decide what is valuable property, what's not valuable property, what might subject us to constitutional claims that we're taking property without just compensation.
That makes sense. The other thing I think missing on here is a timeline or a deadline as to this is when we're reading, this is when we're voting in, this is so that to have a, a more of a realistic timeline would be very helpful so that we can stay on track to make sure that we're progressing through, to make sure that this actually gets into a policy. So that's what I would just recommend is to add that part on there. Do I have a timeline? No.
You mean it's not, well, yeah, it hasn't been introduced.
Correct.
I just drafted it and it's just in a raw draft format in the council, I believe, is still considering reviewing it.
Yeah, I think it'd be important as, uh, Paul and, and Don and Phil and, and I get together that we have good feedback, you know, from you, from citizens, but also from the council to be able to discuss as we make discussions on the matter. Because I think we're pretty much, we're, you know, from my standpoint, I, I've read the agreement, I, I'm, I'm in agreement with it, but I think we need more feedback on whether there should be other matters considered. We want to do this once, this is a big step.
Totally agree. I just don't want it to be forgotten. And so that's what I was looking at with deadlines, if we have a hard, well, if you have a soft deadline, then it kind of keeps us on track to say, yes, we're going to be addressing this and to make sure. And it is a very comprehensive, it's actually the best one that I've seen with the other ones I've done the research for.
Oh, and I was talking, you say it's gonna be a busy year on this type of thing, so Phil will, uh, I don't know if he's, uh, we haven't warned him yet, but he hasn't right now. We'll keep him busy with, with all these, because there, there are other issues that we need to address.
Sure.
Mayor, is it premature to say that we plan to introduce it at the next meeting? And what, what else, is there a di- a different ordinance or another, another ordinance or just modifications to the one that we're working on?
This was the only, uh, hoarding ordinance that I've drafted that would address hoarding, um, and, but I, and I'll put it out there to see what your comments are, what your feelings are, whether or not you, uh, would suggest changes or additions to it. There, there's also been some discussion, uh, with code enforcement about revamping, uh, our, all of our property maintenance ordinances and combining them all into essentially a nuisance ordinance that would address hoarding and all the other types of property maintenance, uh, violations as, as nuisances and address them in a single ordinance. We haven't gotten very far on that yet, but i- if you find this, uh, problem especially severe, I would suggest going ahead with this hoarding ordinance. We can always merge those together later, in later time if we decide to do a, a comprehensive nuisance ordinance.
So just override or supersede the one that we passed.
Yeah, we just merge them together.
Earlier.
So this hoarding ordinance wouldn't include abandoned vehicles in the backyard and that type of thing, that would be more.
We have, we have, uh, we have ordinances for that now.
Okay.
Again, they have to be visible from a public, uh, street or public right of way.
So maybe we can, so this is one that I would like personally to get some public feedback on as well, but maybe if we all review this, talk about it for two weeks and then when we come back on the twenty-eighth, um, we could introduce it, but not suspend the rules and do a hundred ayes and, and, um, and pass it right away, but put it out there, let the press see it, let people, let people view it and give us more feedback on it and then consider adopting it maybe at the, depending on that feedback, adopting it on, at the first meeting in February.
February, March, yeah.
Yes. I think I personally feel the same way, we, that shouldn't be a night to suspend the rules.
No, definitely not.
And, uh, so we.
I'm in agreement, I think we should, yeah, once we get to the point of introduction, I think we should let, let it out there and let them have it for, the citizens have it for two weeks to up to a month, even before we come back, bring it to the meeting for a final adoption.
I agree.
I agree.
Thank you.
Okay, great, thanks.
Thank you.
Will be council items. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Will call? Kissling.
Aye.
McFerrin.
Aye.
Ware.
Aye.
Bounce.
Aye.
Boltie.
Aye.
Five ayes, no nays.
Last time you had your eye tonight.
There wasn't any changes that you've given us before, is there?
No, this is.